Good evening. Welcome to the regular Board of Education meeting. The vice chairman of the special school district, Tuesday, January 20, 2013. All over please. Emergency evacuation, two years in the battle. We're back and off both sides. Please rise for the point of the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome, welcome to the meeting. Couple of items as we start. Before we get too far into the agenda after we have our first two presentations, the board will be adjourning to an executive session to discuss the matters leading to the appointment of a particular person's district merger study, school community advisory. It's allowed to happen after, after our informational items, A and B. So secondly, I just want to make sure that everybody remembers, keeps in, keeps in their thoughts, the folks at Sandy Hook still as they continue to, to deal with their situation and the tragic loss, and continue to support them. And also our servicemen and women who are serving in the United States and worldwide, please keep them in our, in our bonds as we, as they continue to keep us safe on a daily basis. So we're going to start again here with number four, which is informational items. And this is Kim Powers of the Girls Group, Girls Scout Troop 3068 Silver Award. Mrs. Powers.
I've been an adult volunteer in Ticonderoga Girl Scouts for about 20 years. When I started, it was just the Ticonderoga area. About five years ago, we merged with Prom Point, Mariah, and Scroon Lake. So right now, the Southern Essex County Girl Scouts. Throughout those years, we have been faced with declining membership among our older girls. I think this is due to many misconceptions out there and many factors. However, I do think there's a stigma that Girl Scouts just do crafts and sell cookies. And that is very untrue. And to deal with this, a few years ago, our Girl Scouts in the USA started, they restructured themselves to provide more programming, emphasizing a leadership development module. And this combined with a lot of intensive recruitment here in time in the Ticonderoga area, has had a positive outcome in that we are now enrolling more older girls. We currently have three troops that are active in this high school. And among those three troops, we have two girls who will graduate in June, who have been Girl Scouts since kindergarten. So that is quite an accomplishment. It really shows their dedication to our organization. We, to recognize girls such as those girls, and these three girls here, and girls to come, we recently instituted a community scholarship that we are raising funds for on a yearly basis. And the first time that we'll make an award will be at this June's graduation. And that will be awarded to graduating growth active Girl Scouts who meet certain eligibility requirements. So tonight, I'm here with my senior level Girl Scouts. These are ninth graders here at the high school. Emily Powers, Susan Moore, and Kenzie Strum. And the reason that we're here is that these girls have just earned the highest honor that you can earn in cadet girl scouting, which is the Silver Award. And since this project benefits our school district, Mr. McDonald asked us to come, asked the girls to come and discuss their project later. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Susan Moore, who will discuss with you exactly what is the Silver Award.
The Silver Award is the second highest achievement a Girl Scout can earn. You can only earn your Silver Award by first doing a Bronze. You can earn your Bronze Award only as a junior, and your Silver Award only as a cadet. In order to achieve your gold award, the highest honor in Girl Scouting, you have to complete both your Silver and Bronze Awards. The Silver Award project also has to help better your community and help others. You need to put at least 50 hours in per girl on the project, and it can be done in groups or by oneself. For our project, we walked the nature trail, went on the nature trail, took pictures. Each station of the nature trail, we came up with crafts and songs for each one. We put these crafts in the binder for the kindergarten teachers. Also, with the help of Mr. Mallon, we made a new size of the nature trail. Well, we chose this project because the nature trail's fun. I mean, you guys have seen it. It's pretty fun. Like, as a little kid, you get to go on it, go to the wind chill. When you get older, in gym class, you can do like, soli shooting on it. And, but it doesn't get used much educationally, because it's just kind of fun. And we figured if we could add an educational component, it would get used more. So that's why we made the binders. And also, well, just me, the regents biology class put up informational signs throughout the nature trail. And I wanted to help more with that, because we based it off of the signs that were there.
So these pamphlets, these booklets that they're circulating are actually the curriculum that they put together to go along with the nature trail. And they plan to distribute these to the kindergarten students at the, or kindergarten teachers at the elementary school, in hopes that they'll be used with their students for years to come. Does anybody have any questions for the girls?
I just wanted to say that in conjunction with Mrs. Mallon's effort to bring back the nature trail, this is a great coordinated effort with our students and community group. And will benefit all of our kids up at the elementary school. If anyone else is interested, here's the trail. And kind of being coordinating more with the town, there, there is now better access through the new bridge that was built this spring across from the chute. And there are continued efforts to improve the access through that area across Alexander Avenue and up past the school. So it's not only, you guys have really helped out our community and our kids, but made the place more attractive. Very proud of it.
On behalf of the Board of Education, we congratulate, and again, I reiterate, Mr. McDonald, by saying thank you very much for your support and what you've done for our community. Hopefully, over the years, you'll stay in Ticonderoga or come back here and continue to see the nature trail and other things grow. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Powers. Okay, don't want to be sharing with Burley with the alternative education program. Mr. Burley?
That's fine. Right by here.
Yeah, that'd be great. You want to make sure it gets to your spot.
I'm there. And I brought some friends. I'd like to do this, if I may. First, I'd like to introduce the staff of the Alternative High School, although I can almost, you know, everybody. But, but I'd like to introduce them to them. Then I'd like to give just a very short presentation on my part. This is Powers' little, like, short presentation. And then we'd like to open it up to have you ask the staff questions. Any questions you may have, or any input that they may give you. We appreciate your going back and forth with that. So I'd like to start first, our first period teacher, Mr. McClintock, teaching math. Then, Mrs. Brainback had a personal situation, so she couldn't be here. Our third period teacher, Mr. Shaw, teaching science. Our fourth period teacher, Mr. Wells. You know Mrs. Powers, she's in charge of the work-study program. I haven't seen, am I missing anybody? Oh, yes, the heart and soul of our program, Mr. Paladra. He's, he pushed for this Alternative High School, I think, at least 20 years, right there. And he's, he is without a doubt the heart and soul of the program. So having said all that, I just give you a, a quick summation of the academic program. We currently have nine students. We start with 12 in September. I don't know exactly how to say this, but some of the students that we started with, probably weren't going to come anyway, but they were assigned to the program. Three left the district, and one had very poor attendance, and was ultimately dropped. Lately, our attendance has become stronger. It's not perfect, but it's more along the lines of parties than actually missing school. There are some, some kids that missed, but in general, our attendance has become much, much better. And I think it's, it's, it's a function of the kids getting more used to the school and realizing, you know, what they can get out of it. At least, I hope that's what it is. So we're, we're still working on the problem of parties, but it's coming. Some really good news, we had two people that made the honorary from our program. Their last, the last animal, it was in, oh, I can't remember, early December, something like that. And we also will be graduating a student in January. So I mean, I think that's a real positive. And I wouldn't say that he wouldn't have graduated, if we hadn't had the Alternative High School. I think this has smoothed the path, and he's done extremely well. Mr. Merrick gave me some statistics on referrals in the high school. And a few couple of weeks ago, referrals were down 30 percent from last year, which is quite unbelievable. And people have told me that the atmosphere in the high school is much better. Now, I certainly don't want to say that the Alternative High School is the sole reason for problems, but I think we do play a small part as far as that goes. We have brought Mr. Burkheimer up to date. He's visited us already, and he's given me a ton of support. Ms. Blow has been super, and she's, she's given a lot of support. I have contacted both of them, and later in the year, we're going to work on to see what we can do for the next year for the Alternative High School. That's where, that would be a little bit ahead of where we are right now. So, Ms. Powers, if you'd like to get a little bit on the work-study, please, don't be afraid to ask questions to the staff, because they're ready.
The work component is going very well at the Alternative High School. Currently, the students are completing about 99 days a day of work experience. Students are competing, completing these work experiences at work sites throughout the community. If at all possible, I try to climb on not the profit placements for the kids, because not only do they get valuable work experience, but they also get a sense of community pride and give it back to their community. That hopefully will instill in them this sense of community pride and give it back for the rest of their life. At the Alternative at the site, the students are working on instruction that will prepare them for the National Work Readiness Credential Assessment. Our goal is to have our students take this initial assessment in late March, early April. I say initial assessment, because the test is four component assessments. When they sit for an initial, they must take the entire test. After that, if they're unsuccessful at any one of those four components, they may sit for just that component piece, similar to the SAT structure. However, there's a 25-day waiting period between testing sessions. So therefore, if we start in early April, our goal is to get the students through this assessment by the end of the school year. And ultimately, if they are successful at the assessment, and it's our goal to get them through this, they will earn their National Work Readiness credential, which certifies their readiness for entry-level work. And just kind of an aside to this, I've recently been collaborating with the Ticonderoga Revitalization Alliance to create a training program for adults, in order for those adults to earn their work readiness credential. The idea behind this is that by, by creating a well-trained workforce, more industries will be attracted to our area. And the exciting thing for me, to be part of this, is to know that our, our program here is kind of the catalyst that started this ball rolling, and that our students are actually going to be at the forefront of this initiative. So I think that's a really exciting piece, you know, and a huge advantage that we're giving to our students over the years. So at this point, does anybody have any questions for any of the alternative that staff?
Is, is part of the party this problem have to do with transportation? Do you have a transportation issue with kids getting?
I, I don't think it is. In answer to that question, I don't think that that's exactly it. Although, we've talked about a possibility of opening the school up first period for next year, and then having everybody go. And adding that on. But I think it, I don't think it's, it's a, it's a product of transportation. And if it was, I think we'd probably.
Could you explain what the four components of the TM are?
Yes, there's a math test, there's active listening, situational judgment, and a reading test. Most of them are multiple choice tests. The active listening, the participants or the candidates hear a reading, listening piece, and then they respond to it.
Mr. Burley, next year, you see if we're keeping the program and may continue?
I would like to see that, yes. Possibly, depending, there's a lot of variables, and I know money is a, is a major. We're not, we won't know if we have a continuation of the grant till later in the year. The, what I propose to work on with Ms. Blow, Mr. Burkheimer, is putting together the program without funds again, and having that in place to see what we need to do, or, or maybe, you know, just a, a small amount of money, and then go from there. And then if, if we do get the grant, then that's, you know, then we're in high cotton again, as it were. But, but given the economic climate and not knowing exactly the way that the grant is going to go, I think that that's the way that we're going to try to work with it. But there's potential for growth in the program. Again, with your permission, superintendent's permission, possibly, we may open it up to other school districts on a, you know, very limited basis, which might generate some funds for us. We have plenty of space, the space is working out well, and there's potential for having a little bit more space if, if necessary. So, so I would like to see the program continue, because I think, or I really feel for some of the students that we have, it's, it's a great benefit.
I'd like to, you know, I know this is unsolicited, I'd like to, back up, Mr. Burley, I'm, I'm a franchise, I'll teach earth science on there. There's one student in particular that I think that is a result of maybe this year, and potentially maybe, you know, next year, maybe move, you know, maybe put himself in an academic situation where he could move back into a regular high school environment. And that would not, for this student, I think, would be very unlikely for that to be a possibility for him, how to continue on the path that he was on. So I think it's a great program, and many of the students are very fortunate that the community and the board has, has made it available to them. I think it's a great program.
I want to put some of the staff on the spot, but maybe you could share the board some of the challenges that you might, that you're facing. If you always want to, I see you're really good stuff, but I think the challenges that could be considered going forward.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to dance that. I think what we'll find in, if you came up into the school, is if you compare these students to what they were doing last year, you're seeing kids do work, more work, more school work than they have ever done in, and probably in the, in the last five or six years. But our challenge is, is to find the right curriculum to meet their needs. See, on one hand, we have the New York State standards, the New York State regents hanging over our heads. If these students, we, you know, our idea is to get them a high school diploma. But we have, we have the, the problem of the regents exams hanging over our heads, and the pace that we can really push these kids to get the most out of them. So we have to find a way, and I think we have to, we, be the second semester work that we have to do as a, as a staff, is to come up with the right curriculum that meets the needs of the kids. And I think that's the hard part for us as a, as the classroom teachers to, to work on.
I'll speak for myself. I think the, you know, the challenges that I've had, and I've heard witnesses a couple of times, is, you know, you come with high expectations and high hopes, and you're right there, you know, let's get this done. And there are times when it's kind of like this. And my background, I, I'm not used to a lot of this, so it, it really, I guess I just have grown as a teacher, because there's, there's one time early in the year, I reacted to that one way, and the next time, I reacted a different way. And I learned a lot from that little bit of patience, and it's like, you know, you can't force it, it's not going to go. You have to be a little patient, and you got to kind of draw them into it. So it was really, it was a, it was a growth experience for me as a teacher. And I, I think in kind of making that transition, learning to deal with different kids differently, it creates a bond with the kids, you know? They're not having a whiff of crack. They're not, you know, they're, they know that you're, it's going to do the best that you can do to try and recognize they have days, just like we have days, and to try and work with that, you know? So it took a little bit of flexibility, which isn't a bad, obviously.
You spend a lot of your time working on how they interact with adults and each other, because sometimes they do it inappropriately. So you really find yourself spending class time working on, which is valuable for them. I find doing that, because it's, one of the challenges I've seen is, you know, how do you talk appropriately to somebody and get your point across? That's one of the biggest challenges I've seen. But it's a good thing and a bad thing, because when they're blowing up, it's not too fun to see. But you've seen progress, and you see them get a little bit better in that regard.
As one of my students put forward, he said, this is the most spun. So, but that was really a compliment. And this is a boy that was, last year, had lots of problems, and so far this year, today, he's missed two days. So that's really, and he, he got a 90 on his English, and he told me, when he got, he said his grade went up 87, 87 points, so like this. So kudos to him.
As an educator, it's really a, a unique experience to be able to be a part of.
So thank you again for coming. Thank you for taking this on as a project and working with Mr. Burley. I know he's not always easy, it's a personal word, but.
Well, something else I'd like to bring up on the executive.
And I owe me jest with that, Mr. Burley.
You almost broke my heart.
I know.
I haven't seen you at the dump lately either.
I can hide it. So, but I really, I really, on behalf of the board, we really appreciate this, this, I mean, we, it was, it was a concept, you brought it to fruition quickly, you made it happen, and, you know, if we do touch nine kids, or eight kids, or seven kids, it's, it's seven that might not have made it. So, so you can't save everybody, but, you know, these are seven, or nine, or 13, or how many it is, that, that you've given another chance to get through and, and get into life. So I, I, you know, we really appreciate what you do. And, and I know it's a sacrifice, and we know it's a sacrifice, because, you know, it's, you're, you're going from one building to the next, and you're doing a transition from a classroom to this. So we do appreciate your support on that and what you do do. So thank you very much. As we get through and get into budget time again, we'll, we'll hopefully, we'll be able to do this again. We want to do it, and, you know, Mr. Burley will, will continue to talk about it. If there's things that you need next year, if we can continue to go on, then, then let's talk about that. Because, you know, I, I know we had that discussion about, you know, it doesn't cost the district any money. And I think we're, you're saving money right now, because you're saving us folk, kids that would be in detention, or, you know, we'd be out trying to look for, or whatnot. So, so your team's done a very nice job. We do appreciate that. Keep up the good work, and hopefully, we'll see you again in a couple of months, and you'll have another positive report. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. (applause) Just like to introduce Paul Burkheimer as our interim high school principal, and we met, Mr. Mallon is the board president, we've got a board members, we should be out there, like the Baltimore Board of Peace jumped in. Great to go.
So you had about three months retirement or so?
A little more than that.
But, thank you for coming. We really appreciate you coming tonight and, and for stepping in for our district in this situation.
Thank you very much.
So we're going to adjourn now to executive session, so we need a motion, please, to, that we adjourn to executive session to discuss the matter leading to the appointment of particular persons to the district merger study, school community advisory committee. Need a motion?
A motion.
All favor?
All right.
Oppose? Motion's carried. We shouldn't be too long, so. Okay, we need a motion, please, for the Board of Education, we convene regular session. All favor? Oppose? Okay. We're going to continue on with seven recommended actions. Your approval of minutes and financial items. One A, recommended motion that the Board of Education make any necessary corrections and approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting held on December 18, 2012. And B, acknowledge the receipt of the monthly financial reports. And C, acknowledge the receipt of the schedule of bills for payment. E, personnel. One recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Thomas Finney as an assistant technology coordinator effective February 4, 2013, pending successful completion of his probationary appointment. Two, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Phil DeStacy as a cleaner effective February 4, 2013, pending successful completion of her probationary appointment. Three, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the part-time appointment of Marc Marcy Scheiser as a part-time computer aide, five and a half hours a day for three days per week at a rate of $50.66 per day, effective January 16, 2013. There's an enclosure on that. Four, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Joseph Defyat as a volunteer driver of the district's occasional use vehicles, effective December 21, 2012, for the 2012-13 school year. Five, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the following substitute for the 2012-13 school year pending bringer printing and approval by the state of education, state education department, Bolivia, Kenyan, teacher, teaching assistant, and teacher aide. And then six, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the following resolution. Be resolved that Paul Burkheimer is hereby qualified as a qual, certified as a qualified lead evaluator at the Ticonderoga Central School District's classroom teachers, having successfully completed the following training requirements prescribed in 8 NYCRR Section And that is 1 through, 1 through 8. And if you're going to make a motion on all that, I'm not going to read all that. So if you can, if you'd like to, you certainly can, but I've read it before. And we're going to have a motion on those items, please.
So. Just quickly, I, there is not a Treasury report in this, we have a lot of good things happening in the office, and so in February, we'll have two Treasury reports. So just want to make you aware of that. One and two on personnel, our folks, probationary appointments will expire by four, the next board meeting, so this is secret. And the other stuff is pretty self-explanatory. You mentioned that Paul Burkheimer, the resolution, he did receive racial impact and APR training in 2012.
Motion's carried. Thank you very much. So all favor on that?
All right.
Oppose? Motion's carried. We'll continue with seven. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Paul Burkheimer as the Dignity Act Coordinator at Ticonderoga High School, effective January 2 through June 22, 2013. Eight, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Paul Burkheimer as a human rights officer, effective January 2 through June 21, 2013. Nine, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Joseph Stacey to be trained as a bus driver, effective January 16, 2013. We have an enclosure on that. And then C, new business, recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and Committee on Preschool Special Education. One, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the following recommendations from December 8, 2012, through January 11, 2013. And you have an enclosure on that. And let's do a motion on those items, please. All favor?
All right.
Oppose? Motion's carried. D, new business, effect, accept vote donation from Clarence H. Linder Jr. One recommended motion that the Board of Education accept a donation of a 1986 Sea Ray, 1973 Old Town boats and trailers, estimated value $3,800 as is, from Clarence H. Linder Jr. to the Marine Technology Program at the Ticonderoga High School, effective December 3, 2012. We have an enclosure on that. E, new business, accept the, vote donation from Clarence H. Linder Jr. E, new business, accept the boat donation from John McNeil Jr. One recommended motion that the board of education accept the donation of a 1988 Press Line, 1989 Bass Tracker boats and trailers, estimated value of four thousand dollars as is, from John McNeil Jr. to the marine technology program at the Taconoroga High School, effective December 3, 2012. We have, we have an enclosure on that. F, new business, the appointment of members to the merger study, the school community advisory committee. Recommended motion that the board of education approve the appointment of the following members to the merger study, school community advisory committee, effective January 16, 2013. John Donahue, Michelle Young, Nancy Rich, David Bulliano, Mike Cherabini, Joyce Cooper, James Major, Shawna Porter, and Lynn Reel. I need a motion on those items, please.
On motion.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That motion is carried. Or we'll go to eight?
I'm staying on this.
Okay.
Informational items?
Sure. A few things. We have the activity reports in all three buildings. That session off to a good start. We have Regents and Midterms coming up at high school next week, and there'll be some regional scoring for those based on the APPR plans where we can do that. I did want to update you a little bit on safety plans. I had a meeting with Chief Johns last week, and he did, we're scheduling some things together. He wants to review all of our, our safety plans once again and provide some feedback for those, and that worked on some drills that we could do with our staff. He also met with Mr. Donahue at the elementary middle school because that's the one area where we haven't done a lot of the drills that have happened at this building. And Mr. Donahue also has had some meetings with his staff, and I'm gonna ask if he could maybe update the board on some of the discussions he's had with that.
It was on my list of things to do this year, of spread lockdown policy and the procedures for the building. But here's the tragedy today that we moved those plans up. The first thing that, that we did is we created that policy and procedure for the elementary and the middle school. We identified all the secureable locations, which, which as you know, is tough task in that facility. We have thirteen doors in, into lockable locations. We have, we have three-quarter walls in most of, in most of the building. So what we did is we, we made a plan, and we indicated where a classroom should report to, given that there is an emergency. We identified two holders of protocol for all offices, cafeteria, and custodial staff. And then the next step was to meet with the Taconoroga Police Department, which we did this part, this past week. Chief Johns, Control and Masquerade, just came in, in a walk through the building. We briefly went over our plans, and they took the plans with them and matched the building back to, to their department to look at, to review, to make recommendations to me. Part of that is, you know, I made a plan, but that's not my area of expertise. These are the people that, that will be respondents, and one, their plus, and their, and their recommendations. So our plan again is to meet next week to discuss the recommendations and create an actual plan with the law enforcement. This is a work in progress. We, when, when we're ready, we will practice regular drills, and we plan to be proactive with them. And the police also plan to use our buildings to train with their officers without the students in the building to, to, to practice their, their own drills. I'll certainly keep you updated through Mr. McDonald with our progress. Is there any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Just a couple of things on that topic. I also attended a meeting with the regional superintendents. With, the presentation was made by the Flitness and SS County sheriffs, once again motivated or as a result of what took place in Connecticut. And so they're another group that we would like to work with or continue to work with. We have been working with this, this group as part of the Safe Schools, Helping Students Grant, and a lot of the information that we have is from that grant. The one theme that came out of the meeting is that the important thing for what schools can do when we are faced with a situation is, is create delay time, which allows the first responders to get there. So, so as part of our strategies is working with, we're gonna make it more difficult for a potentially dangerous person to have delays in terms of trying to do some damage, because that, the more time we can delay them, the better the chance we have of getting response for people there. So that's gonna be part of the theme of our plans. And then finally, we got a director from State Ed today. Districts have district-wide safety plans, which are general informational things, and then each building has their own specific. We've been asked to post our district-wide plan on our school website. Do not post building-wide plans because they obviously contain information about how we respond, so we'll be, we'll be getting that out as soon as, as soon as we can on that. So those are kind of some updates on, on the safety plans, and I guess I'll answer any of the questions that the board may have.
We have a transportation report from Mr. Body. Just to make you aware, we have a geek request, which we can't support, but a geek request from a private group to rent out our buses for a social function. It'd be nice to be able to generate some revenue and do that, but it's not legal, so you know, you're not gonna open that door. You also have a technology report from Mr. Cassi, and he did make you aware that we did lose a server in the high school last week, because he spent a good part of his time fixing that. We think we have everything, for the most part, up and running. We have, still have the server with some information in case people have lost some stuff, but we are having some discussions about are there other ways of storing our information besides having our own servers? We want to look at maybe, looking at a network type thing, or Google as, as our provider for that, and not having our own servers. But those are in-house discussions that we will bring to you once we determine our direction there. Another request that was made, this is not on the list, but we have been requested by the Hague Questlin Church. They have a church in Hague, which they've outgrown, and they actually, I think, had some property, or at least some property in the village, which they've outgrown, and were using the Best Western as their meeting place, and they had a flood, a leak at the Best Western, and they've asked if, if they could use our facility in case of an emergency for them to hold their services on Sunday, on Sundays. So I contacted the gentleman who made the request and confirmed that it was only in emergency situations. Do not have board policy prohibiting groups from using it for religious purposes. I guess I would throw it out to the board, how should we respond to this request? I have checked with our attorney, it is something that, since there is no board policy saying we can't, because we feel that we want to be good neighbors, we could. I guess your thoughts on that? Anyone?
I'm okay for an emergency to be a good neighbor and support the government, communities, schools. I don't have weekly worship, so.
Okay. So I will respond in a version only, and just so everyone is aware, they would have to provide insurance, and they would have to cover any cost, electricity or anything that, setup or anything like that, that, you know, keep the picture cool in terms of that. Finally, one other thing, and this is also not listed, but Mr. Suffin informed me this week that we have been recognized by Section 7. Every one of our fall athletic teams made the scholar athlete list, so that means that the team had to have a cumulative average of ninety or above, and every one of our fall sports, boys and girls, made that list this year, so that's quite a feather in the cap, and congratulations to the kids and the coaches for balancing the athletic commitments for their athletic. Mr. Alcott is not here, he ended running one falls to pick up some glass panes or a couple of windows that need to get a facility, but you do have a copy of his report in there, and I can answer any questions, or direct any questions to him if there are any that you can afford.
I would like something, some congratulations sent to, to those athletes and their coaches, a letter, please, or should there be some sort of recognition? Please, if they have to the board of education.
I know Fred Herbst is gonna do a story, and I think Judy Stock maybe will do a story as well. Well, it's quite an achievement.
Mr. Wilson's here.
Yes.
One of our coaches.
Okay. We continue with C, future items, as listed. Long weekend this, this weekend, our team, and through April 25, 2015, we can see those items through the legislature. So finally, any public participation? Anybody who'd like to address the board, or anything anyone might, might say?
I'll try to be brief, it's the end of the evening. I have an update and a question. The update is with respect to the backpack program. This weekend, the long weekend, will be the first weekend we'll be distributing the backpacks. They'll be going to thirty students in the elementary school. I met with Mr. Donahue earlier today. I think, we hope, we've got all the questions answered and addressed, and I'd like to thank the, the school board and the administration for their support of the program. I'd love to thank everyone who's stepped up and donated to this program. The, the funding has been just amazing, so we're, we're good to go, and we want it to be as much of a success story as it possibly can because we'd like to expand it. And the next challenge, of course, will be sustaining and keeping it going forward. My question is, if I remember correctly, I believe this, either the board or the school district or both has a policy against allowing advertising in the building or on the sports fields. But I don't know the specifics of that policy, and I wanted to ask, would it be possible to have advertising incorporated into the school calendar? And the reason I ask is, I think that it could possibly be an excellent project for a student group. It could also be a fundraiser for the student group. As was reminded during the budget process, these calendars are, are in the homes of every person in town. They're, they're referred to quite frequently, so I think it would be an attractive advertising opportunity for some of the merchants in the town, just, you know, to have it on the refrigerator or on the wall. And there's, there's some timing issues, of course, associated with when the, all the dates for the school are filled in, but if, I just wanted to clear the initial hurdle, is it, is it something that the board would consider, would they accept? And if it's, if it's okay, or if there are certain parameters that need to be set? If it's not okay, then just tell me I'm crazy, because I've heard that before.
First of all, I don't think there's actually a policy. There's been practice.
Okay.
For a variety of reasons, so it's not so much a policy issue as, as we just discouraged it more, you know, didn't want it in favor of Coca-Cola versus Pepsi or any other brand. So it's certainly something we can discuss.
We, yeah, I would commit to you, we'll consider it, and get you an answer before the next meeting.
Thank you.
That'd be fair.
More than fair.
We need to come up with a calendar solution potentially, so.
I thought we had one, Mr. Wilson.
I thought about that as well.
It worked a lot. This may be the solution. There may have been a creative paper donation to facilitate the calendar this year, but, you know, we talked about solutions. We got in kind of crunch time last year, you know, May, but we brought the calendar back, there's passionate feedback about continuing the calendar because it was cut, but I'd be an advocate of an org, the club or something, taking it on as a fundraiser.
It, it could be where the, the effort of the student group would cover the cost, and then the fundraising component would be what they made in, you know, over and above the cost of putting it together. So it would address the budget issue that we had last year with respect to this school calendar.
So we'll get back to you in a minute.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thanks for spearheading that, that program. Just if you're, if you're at a meeting or so, if you could give us an update as it goes, understanding yet, you know, keeping it anonymous, there's, there's positives.
Will do.
Thank you. Anyone else like to bring up anything at all? Okay? Thanks for the positive presentations. Thanks for coming tonight, and I need a motion to adjourn because I think you're done.
On motion.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay? Motion's carried. Thank you again for coming.